Good evening and welcome to Spokane City Council on July the 8th. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Council Members Zepone.
Here.
Council Member Cathcart.
Present.
Council Member Bingle.
Here.
Council Member Dillon.
Here.
Council Member Klitsky.
Present.
Council Member Navarete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the independent states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight...
How close was I to being in sync with you? How close was I?
Not so close.
No.
Tonight, we're going to start with one appointment to the Plan Commission, and that was Jill Yost. She came before us a couple of weeks ago. I'll entertain a motion for her approval.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
That was one no. Was there a second no?
No.
Okay. All right. That is approved. Welcome Jill. The sects, we are going to reappoint members to the West Quadrant Tiff. That's Fran Poplar.
Excuse me.
Amanda.
Those were deferred.
No, just the two.
Oh, the two, sorry.
Liz Marlin and Wendy Wilber were deferred till next week. We're going forward with the reappointments. I was going to let you read them, but I guess I can read them.
Oh, do you want me to read them? Sorry. Get them here.
I have it at my fingertip if you don't.
So Liz Marlin was deferred. So the appointment of Fran Poplar to the West Quadrant Project Advisory Committee as the at-large primary position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027. And the appointment of Alan Chatham to the West Quadrant Project Committee as the Riverside primary position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027. And the appointment of, I can't remember the second name, if it was Amanda or...
Amanda Richardson, yes.
Was the other one that was deferred.
No, I'm sorry.
Wendy was deferred.
Wendy. Liz Marlin and Wendy Wilbur were deferred.
Liz Marlin. So appointment of Amanda Richardson to the West Quadrant Project Advisory Committee as the Emerson Garfield primary position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027. Appointment of Kimberly Lawrence to the West Quadrant Project Advisory Committee as the West Central primary position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027. An appointment of E.J. Ainelli to the West Quadrant Project Advisory Committee as the Emerson Garfield Associate Position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027. And the appointment of Alan Chatham to the West Quadrant Project Advisory Committee as the Riverside primary position for a term of July 8, 2024 to July 8, 2027.
Thank you. All those in favor of the reappointments to the West Quadrant Tiff indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Those are approved. Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. We have one public testimony. Dennis Flynn.
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Thank you for completing the business necessary to run our city, from tires to chemicals to high voltage equipment, to property acquisition to garbage cans. I appreciate the work you do for our city. Regarding OPR 2024-0522 for garbage and recycling cans downtown, maybe I'm not alone, but who else can't believe that we were leasing solar compacting receptacles in the first place? And I'm not sure how fancy these 66 garbage cans and 66 recycling bins are, but at $216,000 after shipping and sales tax, that is more than $1,600 each. I'm glad this is projected to save money, but that sure seems like a lot per receptacle. On July 4th, when I was at Vitalent, I was surprised when I read the mayor's proposal to offer early retirement incentives for police officers since we were recently looking at adding a safety levy as the largest property tax increase in Spokane history to the November ballot, but that got delayed. I thought we were already paying too much overtime and having troubles recruiting, so won't this exacerbate those problems? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Council Member Cathcart?
Yeah, I would just say on the trash receptacles, I had a very similar thought and considered quite a bit, pulling it aside and voting no. But I did a little research online and was just trying to find some comparable alternatives. And numbers were hard to come by, but it seemed like we were actually somewhere in the ballpark, which surprised me, but it did seem that that was likely the case even with some alternatives out there.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? The consent agenda is approved. Ms. Fister?
Special budget ordinances. Ordinance C 36521 is deferred indefinitely. Ordinance C 36537 amending ordinance number C 36467 passed by the City Council in November 27, 2023 and entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2024, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year ending December 31, 2024, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage and Declaring an Emergency in Appropriating Funds in." Water Waste Water Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $1,413,103. A of the increased appropriation, $955,117 is provided solely for city utility tax in the Sewer Maintenance Department. B of the increased appropriation, $337,986 is provided solely for city utility tax in the Riverside Park Reclamation Facility Department. C of the increased appropriation, $80,000 is provided solely for city utility tax in the Water Department. D of the increased appropriation, $40,000 is provided solely for city utility tax in the Integrated Capital Management Department. And Solid Waste Fund, number two, increase appropriation by $3348,500. A of the increased appropriation, $2,830,000 is provided solely for fleet maintenance in the Solid Waste Collection Department. B of the increased appropriation, $362,500 is to be provided solely for city utility tax in the Solid Waste Collection Department. C of the increased appropriation, $156,000 is to be provided solely for city utility tax in the Solid Waste Disposal Department. This action arises from the need to adjust various enterprise funds.
We have one commentary. Mr. Flynn?
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. So the utility taxes trending over budget by over $100,000 per month for water wastewater and over $40,000 per month for solid waste. And in addition to the extra $40,000 per month for solid waste for utility taxes, they also need $2.8 million for their collections budget, which equates to over $235,000 per month. So first off, how does this big of a gap come to exist? Does anyone need a reprimand, demotion, or outright firing for negligence? Besides this ordinance, there are multiple others claiming utility taxes trending over budget and inflationary pressures. Which of us citizens do you think is not feeling inflationary pressures? Yet we frivolously, or maybe more appropriately ideologically, spend money on clinics and schools, painting the streets, prosecuting youth for acting dumb on said paint, and so many other things, including, dare I say, recycling services. $2.8 million to increase solid waste collections budget? How about this, declare an emergency and eliminate recycling pickup, including surplus employees no longer needed for said pickup immediately? I'd bet there's your $2.8 million plus sum. But I can hear it now, how dare you suggest stopping recycling pickup? Well, we'd all be surprised if we looked just how much what we put in the recycling bin actually gets thrown in the waste energy plants, burners, anyway. The only thing they really want is the tin and the aluminum, and you could collect that yourself and take it to your local recycling center and collect a few bucks instead of paying the exorbitant city rates for collection. But of course, recycling is included in our federal advocacy priorities, so I'm sure ideological purity tests will win out over critical thinking.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Hearing done. Prepare to vote.
Aye.
That was 7-0.
Ordinance C 36538, increasing general fund revenue by $1,871,000. Fire EMS fund revenue by $300,000. And traffic calming measure fund by $437,000. And providing recommendations to adjust material budget variances per SMC 7.14.030C3. This ordinance covers increases, decreases, and other adjustments for the following departments. Spokane Police Department, Management and Budget Office, Internal Audit, Clerk's Office, Council Office, Mayor's Office, Police Ombudsman, as well as other departments as described in the ordinance. This action arises from the need to adjust the general fund budget.
No public comment. Any council commentary? Council Member Cathcart?
Yeah, I was set to vote for this, and I generally agree with most of what's in it, but it was amended this afternoon and includes essentially sweeping some dollars from our reserves into traffic calming. And again, I think our clerk, Terry, just kind of said it right. I mean, this is about increasing general fund revenue, not necessarily taking it away. And so I'm not going to support this. I just don't think that we should be taking out of reserves at this time.
Council Member Zepone?
Yeah, I disagree with Council Member Cathcart's assessment that this is taking funds from the general fund. I believe that the general fund already took funds from the traffic calming fund that are not being used correctly. And so that this is returning those funds back to the traffic calming fund rather than considering them general fund in the first place, that this is actually putting them back where they were supposed to be in the first place.
Councilman McCathcart?
Yeah, the only other thing I would say is, and then certainly that's one perspective, but you know, we made a specific allocation out of traffic calming for a specific purpose, and we do need to have a conversation around what we're going to do there going forward. But this, these dollars don't relate to that specifically. In fact, there's a separate ordinance that's already prepared by Council Members Zepone to actually repeal money directly from traffic calming or from PD that was taken out of traffic calming. So we can actually do this directly, kind of in a transparent way, rather than swiping funds from the reserves and just saying, well, we're just sort of filling in the blanks. Again, I don't disagree with the base of what's being discussed. We had agreed to $1.8 million to support PD out of the traffic calming. We are not getting the service that we had expected for that. All of that is true, but I think that there are some other ways that we can go about addressing that as well as where the money would come from if we were going to take it back. But right now, the amount of money that we've, that PD is, or about the amount of resources that PD is losing is substantial. I mean, we're going to vote on a retirement thing to reduce by 25 officers. That's one big hit. They were just given a mandate to reduce a half a million dollars indiscriminately. So there's massive hits that are coming to them. And so while I completely agree with the base of what we're talking about and the intent behind those dollars, and we all said it, I think I was pretty emphatic about it. But to take that money back, or even a portion of that money back, would only serve to harm, I think, our law enforcement efforts and frankly, make it impossible to even stand up a traffic unit, which is the ultimate goal. So I'll just leave it there.
You have a commentary? Prepare to vote.
No.
Thank you. That's 5-2.
Ordinance C 36539, Fleet Services Fund, number one, increase revenue by $2,400,000. A of the increased revenue, $2,400,000 is provided solely for inter-fund vehicle equipment repair. Number two, increase appropriation by $2,400,000. A of the increased appropriation, $1 million is provided solely for vehicle repair and maintenance supply. B of the increased appropriation, $1,200,000 is provided solely for equipment repairs and maintenance. C of the increased appropriation, $200,000 is provided solely for contractual services. And Management Information Services Fund, number one, decrease appropriation by $206,669. A of the decreased appropriation, $205,000 is removed solely from software maintenance. B of the decreased appropriation, $1,669 is removed from base wages and associated employee benefits. And Reprographics Fund, number one, decrease appropriation by $36,864. A of the decreased appropriation, $18,600 is removed solely from equipment repairs maintenance. B of the decreased appropriation, $18,264 is removed solely from hardware maintenance. And Utility Billing Fund, number one, decrease appropriation by $1,797. A of the decreased appropriation, $1,797 is removed from base wages and associated employee benefits. This action arises from the need to adjust various internal services funds.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think it took.
Okay, let's try it again. We've got Council Member Bingle down as a aye already. Okay, prepare to vote.
There we go.
Yeah, 7-0. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36540, Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund, number one, eliminate one classified vacant crime analyst from one to zero in the Police Crime Analysis Program. Number two, decrease appropriation by $113,582. A of the decreased appropriation, $113,582 is removed from base wages and associated employee benefits in the Police Crime Analysis Program. And Forfeiters and Contributions Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $520,500. A of the increased appropriation, $100,000 is to be provided solely for vehicles. B of the increased appropriation, $140,000 is to be provided solely for machinery equipment. C of the increased appropriation, $160,000 is to be provided solely for software maintenance. D of the increased appropriation, $25,000 is provided solely for personal protective equipment. E of the increased appropriation, $70,000 is provided solely for confidential funds. F of the increased appropriation, $15,000 is provided solely for registration schooling. G of the increased appropriation, $10,500 is provided solely for operating supplies. And Traffic Calming Measures Fund, number one, increase appropriation by $50,000. A of the increased appropriation, $50,000 is provided solely for fleet maintenance and library fund, number one, decrease appropriation by $1,434. A of the decreased appropriation, $1,434 is removed from base wages and associated employee benefits. And Park Fund, decrease appropriation by $1,582. A of the decreased appropriation, $1,582 is removed from base wages and associated employee benefits. This action arises from the need to adjust various special revenue funds.
We've got one public comment. Will Hewings?
Good evening. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown Spokane. I want to share my views on Ordinance C 36540. While there are aspects of this ordinance I support, there are also elements I find problematic. First, I support the elimination of one long vacant crime analyst position, which would decrease appropriations by $113,000. It's prudent to allocate resources where they are most effective. And if a position has been vacant for an extended period of time, it suggests that these funds could be used better somewhere else. I question the proposed increase of appropriations by $520,000. While I typically support additional funding for the Spokane Police Department, I have concerns about them wanting to purchase, spend $100,000 to purchase undercover police vehicles. I mean, three vehicles? I mean, I know you guys seize vehicles, like I've mentioned before. I don't see why now you need to spend more money on undercover police vehicles because if you walk by the police precinct, a lot of them are unmarked. They're pretty much undercover already. Besides, so I strongly disagree with that. I support purchasing new camera equipment, spending $140,000, especially knowing that they've been using the same equipment since 2018. I also support this software. I also definitely support these purifying respirators, which I find sad now that they actually got to have these respirators because they're going to come into contact with fentanyl, which I'm going to speak about later. But anyways, and there's other things, but I emailed my response to you, and I hope you read it. But thank you.
Thank you, Will. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36542, Regarding Changes to Various Funds to Make Grade and Associated Pay Range Changes for Various Positions for the Second Quarter of 2024. As more specifically described in the ordinance, this action arises from the need to adjust pay ranges to align with salary analysis.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-55, Adopting the City of Spokane's Federal Legislative Agenda for the Years 2024 to 2025, Deferred from June 24, 2024 Agenda.
We have one public comment. Dennis Flynn?
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles regarding Resolution 2024-055, the city's agenda for federal legislative advocacy. Our city's federal legislative advocacy agenda is set in this, and you know what is missing in any of the stated priorities? Advocating to remove federal dictat. Your hands are tied to the puppet master's strings in all these grants you apply for, that you can't even come close to making local solutions to address local problems in a manner that works in our local community. Just look at the results produced by the dictat strings on all the same problems we face, except at larger scale in Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, and LA.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-62 is deferred to July 22, 2024. Resolution 2024-63, Declaring Whitney Equipment and Company Incorporated, Woodinville, Washington, a sole source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a value blanket order for teledyne ISCO flow monitoring systems, parts and supplies for a five-year period from August 1, 2024 through July 31, 2029, approximately $608,000 without public bidding.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-64, Setting Hearing Before the City Council for August 12, 2024, for the Vacation of the Alley Between Lee Street and Stone Street from the South Line of Broadway Avenue to the North Line of Springfield Avenue as requested by Richard Clemson.
There's no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ordinance C 36532, Relating to the City's Code of Ethics, Adopting a New Chapter 1.04B of the Spokane Municipal Code and Repealing Chapter 1.04A of the Spokane Municipal Code.
We have one public comment. Dave M., I believe he's online.
Dave, could you hit star 3? Dave, not seeing your hand up right now. There are two people online. I'm going to unmute everybody who's online. Dave, you can speak up. You're ready. They're unmuted.
All right, then. Sorry we missed you, Dave, if that was our technical problems on our end. Any council commentary on this? Council Member Cathcart?
Yeah, just two things. I will not be supporting this tonight. Primarily, the primary reason is I think there's a... One of the proposals in there, just to me, does not make a lot of sense. And I think optics matter. And it essentially allows the city attorney and the chair of the Ethics Commission, without any input from anybody else, to summarily dismiss certain ethics complaints. And I just think you should always have some other eyes on that. There should be some other folks interjecting. And I brought this up earlier. I don't think the city attorney should frankly be involved just because of the optics of there being a potential for a conflict of interest. And so I really feel it should be the hearing examiner. Opened other ideas, but to me, it does not work to have the city attorney playing that function as I think that the potential for people to perceive a conflict of interest is just too great. The other issue is, and I believe this is still in there because we have not amended it, the change in terms of how we interpret state law as it relates to our charter. To me, I think it's really important that, without the input of a judge, that we abide by the charter. There has been a number of instances where we have not done that, and I think that that is wrong, absolutely wrong. And so to me, we should be going to a judge in some way to seek, or the Attorney General, to seek their opinion on whether or not the charter that they are sort of taking us an end around is, in fact, invalid, which it might be, but no judge has ruled in that way. And I don't think that we should ignore law, which our charter is, law voted in by the people we represent, without specific legal input that says that that provision is not enforceable. So for me, the change there, ignoring the charter, is not something that I support. But the biggest issue is just the fact that the city attorney is sort of setting themselves into a position where it could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Any other council commentary? Council Member Zepone?
I'll just say I'm really grateful for the work of our city attorney for revising this. I think that last year's ethics hearings or complaints showed that there's some real problems with our current process for the Ethics Code, and I think the legal department was really thoughtful on how they did this. I don't think it's perfect. I don't think that there's anything that necessarily would be perfect. I think that there is some issues as Council Member Cathcart referenced, but I do think that this is the best solution for now. And I personally couldn't think of any other ways to do it. So I think that this is good, and I think it'll create a better process for frivolous complaints that right now seem to be frequently happening and should be dismissed quicker and puts liability on not just council members or the mayor, elected officials, but also others, employees of the city. And I think this will make a better process for them.
Any other commentary? Prepare to vote.
No.
Oh. No. That's 5-2. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36533, Relating to Whistleblower Protection, Adopting a New Chapter 1.04C of the Spokane Municipal Code. adopting a new chapter 1.04C of the Spokane Municipal Code.
No public comment on this? Any council commentary? Councilmember Katkard?
Yeah, I'll just say quickly, I do intend to support this. And in fact, I can't find the subsection now. But I think it's interesting, in contrast to the ethics, it actually lists out the three entities that you can file your complaint with, none of which are the city attorney. You've got the hearing examiner, the county prosecutor, and it might be the HR director is the other one. And so I just want to point out, I think that that got it right. The optics of having the city attorney be the person you would go to with that complaint would not make sense. And so, but I think overall, the policy works.
Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36534 titled Gun Violence Prevention for a Safer Spokane relating to the Establishment provisions relating to firearm safety and prevention, adopting a new chapter 10.75 to Title 10 of the Spokane Municipal Code and repealing Section 12.05.065 of the Spokane Municipal Code.
We have public comment? First is Dave M. Have you joined us?
I don't think Dave has. Dave, could you hit star three if you're online? I might have to come back to him.
Okay. Next is Will Huelings. And then Kate Telus.
Good evening again. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. Again, as I stated a few weeks ago, I strongly oppose Ordinance C 36534, a so-called gun violence prevention for a safer Spokane ordinance, written and sponsored by two Democrats, or sorry, two city council members. This ordinance aims to establish provisions relating to firearm safety and prevention by adopting a new chapter. And I'm not going to read it, but basically, despite its purported intent to enhance safety and reduce gun violence, I find this ordinance deeply flawed and misguided. Like I said before, you guys are as I mentioned, you're more likely, at least from my experience living downtown, I'm more worried about getting stabbed or assaulted by somebody than somebody with a gun. Okay, I know there's guns. I've seen there's just a shooting. It's rather disturbing. But a lot of these proposals in this, and I mean, I don't got time to read this. My time's short. But something that I wish you guys would focus your your energy on, that's more people are dying more of, is fentanyl. More people are dying of fentanyl overdoses than gun violence here in our city. I mean, it's pretty sad. And I didn't mention, I got Narcan right here. I didn't mention that in my last speech. But it's sad also that you want to spend $10,000 to provide for law enforcement so they can have Narcan. Why not give it to them free, like you give everybody else free Narcan? I got four boxes at city council meeting valued at $50 a box for free. Now you don't want to charge and spend $10,000 to buy Narcan. Makes zero sense. But back to what I was talking about before my time runs out. These Democrats claim that gun violence is a public health and safety crisis. Like I said, that you use a lot of stats that seem exaggerated. But anyways, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Kate? Kate Telus, are you in person online?
Kate, if you're online, can you hit star three? I might have to come back to Kate. There are two folks online. If you could raise your hand or hit star three, Kate, if you're online.
If not, we'll go next to Shari Barnett.
I'm Shari Barnett, and I live in Spokane to President Wilkinson and all members of the city council. I know that we do have a crime problem and a gun problem, but the problem is morality. We have gangs. We have sex trafficking. We have drug trafficking. We have alcoholics. And we're not doing enough to correct those problems. I think when our forefathers made that amendment, they said, "It shall not be infringed upon." Our problem is people being allowed to use guns that have no morality, and they are not protecting our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Shari. Shari Rizardi? Did I get that correct?
Shari, if you're online, can you hit star three? I'm just going to unmute folks again who are online. And Kate or Shari, if you are there, you can go ahead and speak up. You're unmuted.
Okay, Dennis Flynn.
Hi, counsel, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. Debate on the appropriateness of these restrictions aside, one of the whereas makes a point that, according to the Gun Violence Archive website, there's been 135 mass shootings so far in 2024. You many, you know how many the website lists as having been in Spokane? Zero. In Washington State? Zero. In Washington, Idaho, and Oregon states combined? Zero. And take it for what you think it's worth, but going through the cities that had more than one mass shooting is listed on that website, 26 out of the 30 are Democrat or progressive-controlled cities that have arguably the most strict of gun laws already. Another whereas references the tragedy of child and teen deaths. And this is an abhorrent and despicable thing to include these tragedies. As anyone who knows about this knows, those are suicides. And a gun is not a prerequisite for a suicide. And using these family tragedies is just gross. Another whereas references the Washington Alliance for Gun Responsibility. Yeah, I'd expect as much unbiased coming out of them as I'm sure many on the council expect would come unbiased out of the Second Amendment Foundation. Another whereas states that, quote, "Stronger gun laws have been proven to reduce gun violence," end quote, but does not include any reference material to support this definitive statement. I just don't accept the premise that you're all experts on the Second Amendment, the Washington State Constitution. Nor are we familiar with both sides of the argument regarding gun legislation. In fact, the Democrat-run cities I previously noted dominating the mass shootings that this ordinance references actually appears to belie the promise of this whereas. And isn't it interesting that there's no whereas that references the hundreds of thousands of times a year guns are used by individuals to prevent violence and crime? Or that there have been no mass shootings in any schools that allow teachers to be armed? Lastly, even though the final whereas makes the claim that, quote, "The Spokane City Council intends to update its firearm regulations to make the community safer from gun violence," end quote, I'll note you didn't consider my commentary on the first reading as worthy of a modification to specify the metrics that will be tracked to identify the effectiveness of these new regulations and to automatically repeal this after two years without a positive vote of the council to extend it if the metrics prove there was no positive effect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could we go back to folks online? We have, we called on Dave M., Kate Telus, and Shari Rizardi. If any of you are online, I see one more person joined. Go ahead and hit star three. Okay, great. I have one hand up. Who's this?
Yes, hi. Thank you for taking my call. This is Kate Telus. I am the co-chair of Spokane's Moms Demand Action chapter. And I just wanted to voice again my support. I was there on the June 24 meeting. I just want to voice my support again for this ordinance. As I said before, one of my greatest fears is a school shooting. And I was a recess aide who, I volunteered my time with four of us watching about 150 kids. And one of the reasons, one of the things that really frightened me being a recess aide was our goal was also to check the perimeter, to make sure that there were, there was nobody who looked suspicious that trying to talk to the kids, potentially to take kid, or potentially to come into the schoolyard with a gun. And the vice principal, I'm an attorney, so I want to ask, what is our plan if and when, if that happens? And she said, "You're to take as many kids as you can, and you are to run as far away as you can from the person with the gun." So I really, really, really am an advocate for making smart gun reform laws so that none of us, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, friends of kids ever have to encounter something like that. Thank you very much for your time and for considering this important ordinance.
Thank you, Kate.
Last call for Dave M. or Shari Rizardi online. Uh, go ahead. Call on user two. No, okay.
Okay. Any council commentary? Councilmember Dillon?
Well, we do have an oral amendment. It's really minor, just technical in nature. This is my first time doing this, so bear with me. But, and this went out to the clerks before the meeting. But in Section 1, creating a new section, 10.75.030F, the introductory sentence should read, F, in Section F, this section 10.75030 shall not apply. The code that we had listed was 10.75040. So just basically changing that 040 to 030.
Scribner's error. Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah. So I put forward the motion to adopt this oral amendment.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Commentary, Councilmembers Katkard?
Do we need to suspend the rules?
Sorry, no, we don't. Under our, it's technical. And really, what we're doing is saving Ms. Pfister the trouble of correcting it later, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingo?
My hand is up for commentary, but yeah.
All right, then.
Well, we got to adopt the amendment.
All in favor of the amendment, in case by saying aye? Aye. Any no's? Abstentions? The amendment is passed? Now, Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, so I won't be supporting this today largely because I think it's an affront to people's rights to defend themselves and their families. Mostly, I think what this does is just adopt state law, you know, which also is incorrect. But there's been a lot of, you know, fears that have been mentioned in this. And I share some of those fears, right? You know, I have a young son who just started school this year, just completed his first school. School shooting is something that genuinely does concern me as a father, which is why I did not send them to public schools because I wanted armed guards at the school where I send my children because some people will come in and try to hurt kids. They are bad, evil, evil, evil human beings. And I want my kids in a place where at least they have a chance at being defended as opposed to a public school where you do see situations like Yvalby, where the police fail in their duties to protect the community. And, you know, if the teachers, if teachers had the right to carry, which is something I proposed in, you know, my first year here, if teachers had the right to carry, then, you know, you would have teachers being able to defend students if you had parents with the ability to carry in these areas. And actually, I thought Mr. Flynn did a great job of explaining how, you know, the mass shootings that we see in 26 of the 30 cities are all, you know, cities that have, you know, pretty strict gun bans. And I think that that in and of itself is pretty good evidence that this is a bad policy if we're trying to reduce gun violence. And so I'm a person, you know, been pretty open about this, who, you know, who carries every day. Because again, you know, the hope is obviously that you never need to use it. But if somebody is going to do you harm, you know, you have a right to defend yourself. And now I have a CPL, a concealed pistol license, and I carry that on me every day because I also concealed carry. But what's the difference between me walking into a building with no jacket on and people can see it versus me with a jacket on? What has legitimately changed there? The honest answer is nothing, except for now you can't see it. And I understand that, you know, guns make people uncomfortable, right? And I totally get that, which is why I do conceal. But at the same time, you know what's scarier than a gun you can see? A gun you can't see. You know what's actually more detrimental than a gun you can see? A gun you can't see. Because you don't know that then it's there. I'm frustrated by this policy because, again, I think it is, I think, again, overall, we're just adopting state law, which in and of itself normally isn't a problem, except for when we're adopting a bad state law, then, you know, that's a problem. Other testimony I heard when this first came up, you know, a gentleman came up and said, you know, people who carry scare him. And I don't tend to think I'm a pretty scary individual, you know? And they said, you know what, you don't need to carry a gun. You don't need to do that. We should just leave it to the police. Now, keep in mind, those kinds of folks who would say, "Leave it to the police," are the same kinds of people who would come in here and say that our police are inherently racist. We have the second deadliest police force in the nation, right? Those same arguments are made by the people who are saying, "Leave it to the police," now are also the ones saying that you shouldn't trust the police. And so I actually think that that's pretty dissonant. And I don't know which side of that argument to believe. Do you think the police are good and are actually there to protect us? Or are the police bad, out there murdering people, specifically minorities? So when it comes to this ordinance, I think that there's just a lot of bad in here. I think that it's something that will make us actually less safe. I appreciate the intention of wanting to make Spokane a safer place. I believe that that is, Councilmember Dillon's intention here is to make Spokane a safer place, and I appreciate that. Again, that premise, I think that this fails. I think it's a miss. And I actually think it's going to make us less safe. I think it does infringe upon our rights, and I'll be voting against it.
Councilmember Katkard?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've, obviously, since this came forward, one of the arguments I've brought up a few times is that it, I believe it really is essentially just restating state law. And there is a way we could just codify state law. But this kind of goes a little broader than that. But essentially, 941230, RCW 9.41.230B, talks about willfully discharges any firearm, airgun, or other weapon, or throws any deadly missile in a public place or in any place where any person might be endangered thereby. And that, the penalty for that is a gross misdemeanor, which is essentially what is in this proposed ordinance. But I, very similar to what Councilmember Bingo said, I do want legitimately to compliment Councilmember Dillon because clearly, he's very passionate about this and wants to see less violence in our community. I think we all probably very strongly agree with that. I can't imagine anybody in the audience would disagree. And so if I could, with permission, Council President, I'd like to just read from an article real quick from the spokesman review, if that's okay?
Please.
So this is from October 2023. The headline, "People Accused of Violent Crimes in Spokane County Were Let Out of Jail Without Posting Bail 665 Times in Nearly Three Years." And then just one more section here. Among defendants accused of any felony crime in that 33-month period, including nonviolent ones, 2,704 were let out of jail without having to post bail. Of those, 235 were accused of the most serious crimes, Class A felonies, which could potentially result in lifetime prison sentences. We just had a situation where a gentleman fired a gun out in public, was arrested, booked and released. And then he went and violently attacked an 80-year-old man downtown. So if we want to truly get a handle on this, there's a lot of things, obviously, we can do. But I think primarily, it's in the hands of our justice system, our judges, and those individuals. And so I would love to work with Councilmember Dillon or any other member of this council to find a way to make our judges council, to find a way to make our judges more effective, and to get them to pursue sentences that are actually justified, that actually create justice for victims, that actually protect the community. So to me, I think that's a big piece. There's a whole lot, obviously, that, that goes around this, that, that I think, you know, you can obviously look at. But if we want to really have a safe community, we want to have less violence, less gun violence, and the benefit is then we can better protect people's right to self-defense, which is guaranteed in the United States Constitution, actually more strongly in the Washington State Constitution. That's really important, and so we should be, be thinking about those things. I do want to just make a couple comments real quick. There's been a flood of emails about this, and I just want to, I don't know that everybody actually knows what's in this. I've seen some that talks about how it's gonna ban guns. I've seen some, well, we, we heard from a, a person this evening talking about school shootings, and as counsel member Bingo said, I am scared to death of school shootings. I don't have a child in school yet, but it's something I think about, certainly. And, but this will have no, no effect, zero, none, less than, less than that. I mean, it just, it doesn't touch those issues. And so I just want to make sure people understand, we're effectively restating state law. There is no big change in enforcement or anything else. And the other pieces that are in here, with regards to City Hall, that's effectively already covered under state law. And then there's also some pieces that I don't really believe we have the power to influence. And that is specifically the rules around the arena, and the rules around the stadium, and the Opera House, and the Convention Center. Those are governed by a governmental, quasi-governmental entity known as the Public Facilities District. Yes, we, we have maybe some influence, but I don't believe we can override them. This is just my personal belief. We don't have a legal opinion. They said it would take two weeks to get that to us. We don't have that today. But I don't believe we can control those things. But, that being said, I think state law has already covered those areas as well, regardless of what's in our code. So I don't think it makes a difference at the end of the day, but, but I do think we are overstepping what we are allowed to do. But until, until a judge rules that way, that'll just be my opinion.
You have the counsel commentary? Counselor member Dillon?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Yeah, thank you. And I agree with, you know, counsel member Kat Card, our criminal justice system absolutely has to be reworked, and that is, you know, part of this conversation. I do disagree with the kind of assessment of the ordinance. You know, it goes beyond just restating what is in state law, particularly with discharging, as you mentioned, state laws about discharging in public places near or where there are people. This bans firing within city limits completely. As far as, you know, the language regarding the community centers, City Hall, but in addition, the Public Facilities District, our arena, stadium, the feedback actually came from them. They had issues internally with policies related to folks bringing in weapons, and so it was important to have that in code. And I was really grateful to have that input with them. And then lastly, making sure that as part of our forfeiture policy, that we include magazine and ammunition, that that was something, again, that was missing. We got feedback from the chief of police and SPD Legal regarding that, because what we don't want is ammunition, guns, people who've been victims of gun violence, for this to be recirculated back out onto the streets. And just, again, a little bit more about kind of the origins of this ordinance and, you know, how this all came together. I mean, we have seen an increase in shooting incidents in the city. We got some numbers back from SPD, from January to May, there's been 44. So we're on track to surpass gun violence incidents over the previous two years, with right now our city averaging two shootings a week, as well as accidental discharge incidents. There was three in 2022, seven in 2023. And again, in that first six-month window, we've already had six. I can't think of an issue, since I have been here, that I've received more emails about very strongly in support. The emotion and a lot of the heartfelt stories, some of the quotes, you know, we took down, gun violence is often a deterrent for me and others to participate in Spokane events. This is a step in the right direction for keeping employees and citizens safer, and it's essential to our community that you value our safety. So I do really take that to heart. In April, I did a police ride-along, and, you know, you go through, when you do a police ride-along, you know, this is what's gonna happen if we take on fire, if we need to call in backup. And it's like, already, your heart's pumping, the adrenaline's going. Can't imagine what the, you know, lieutenant next to me is going through, and, and he'd been shot at before. And as soon as we went through, and I signed the disclaimer, we were off. And we were racing to Riverfront Park. This was about 9:30, and there was a basketball game, there was a fight that broke out. A dad reached into the back of his car to grab a gun to bring to this fight that had happened. His two-year-old was in the backseat, grabbed the gun, discharged, it went in his son's cheek, in one side and out the other. Kid was sent to the hospital, ended up making it, but just watching this unfold, just that quickly, being thrown into a major crime scene, was absolutely horrifying. And when you think about what are your, your recourse is, you know, what got us here, what are some things that we can do to try and, and prevent this? And not having language in our city code related to firearms, I really think it is incumbent on us to, to take action. I want to thank the Alliance for Gun Responsibility for all that they do, Moms Demand Action, and everybody who emailed, legislative staff, Jenny Ramos, who's just instrumental in, in drafting this, and counsel member Klitsky for making this stronger. And I guess one thing that I've always thought about, as it relates to, you know, gun safety and policies, that if you are a responsible gun owner, then this is not gonna affect you.
Counselor member Klitsky, then counsel member Navratia.
Thank you, counsel member Dillon, for bringing this forward, and for Moms Demand Action, for also helping bring this forward. I think there's a lot of reasons to support this beyond the broad community support we've already seen in our inboxes for the last several weeks. Responsible gun ownership is a very important thing, and I think we haven't been promoting that in our state, in our country, very well. And we're experiencing an epidemic of gun violence because of it. I have an 11-year-old child. She, and I'm a Gen Xer, so I went to school, I never contemplated armed guards, and I never had an active shooter drill. My daughter started having active shooter drills in preschool. And so she has been trained, since she was a toddler, what to do in an active shooter situation. That is, that is just horrific, and that is all children right now. Millions of children are being traumatized by our lack of will to be responsible gun owners in this country. And so anything that we can do to get us more in that direction, I think is very important. The other consequence of children living their lives having to do active shooter drills, I take my daughter to the symphony, to ballets, to velocity sports games, all kinds of places in our community. I want her to have that experience of getting out there and living in a great city. But there have been several different occasions where she has seen someone open carrying, and her body language and her ability to enjoy the situation just completely changes. In fact, after the first active shooter drill, my happy-go-lucky, take-on-the-world-fearless toddler was a different person. And that happens every day, or every time there's an active shooter drill. You can notice the difference in your kids. I don't think there's any parent out there that doesn't have to deal with the change in the emotional wellness of their child for at least a couple weeks after every active shooter drill. And then to bring them out in public and try to take them to nice events and fun things, and have them see people carrying weapons to these things, is more, further traumatization of our children, and it doesn't make us more safe. A gun is not a shield. A gun does not make you or anyone around you bulletproof, and you're, you're not gonna know ahead of time if somebody's going to start getting violent with their gun. And I don't think that I, or my child, or anyone in this community should have to trust untrained civilians to be out there carrying their weapons into big crowds, into entertainment, into sporting events, into places where we should be recreating. And sometimes emotions get high, but they should not be involving weapons. So I think this is a very important ordinance for our community, and I think it is a step in the right direction. I'm very happy to support it, and I'm grateful for everyone who's worked on it.
Counselor member Navratia.
Yeah, I also want to thank counsel member Dillon and Klitsky for bringing this up. I am going to fully support it. I am sympathetic to, you know, in also piggybacking on what counsel member Klitsky said, if you are a responsible firearm owner, then you shouldn't be worrying about it. I, I just, there's no reason why you should have a firearm with you if you are outside. For example, myself, being a woman of color, being Latina, hate crimes are probably gonna go up again after 2016. I deserve the right to protect myself. There's a lot of racist people out there, and I deserve that right. My firearm stays at home. I am not carrying it with me, because like counsel member Klitsky said, there are emotions, and I, I don't trust the people that carry their arms. There are trained people that have problems, psychological problems, after they shoot their firearm, that have to go through a lot of healing, let alone a person that's trained or that has been to the shooting range or out there. During that moment, what's gonna happen? I, I don't know if they feel that they are fully trained, but I'm glad this is here. I'm glad counsel member Dillon put it out. It totally has my support.
Great, thank you. Counselor member Zappone.
Yeah, I want to thank counsel member Dillon for doing a lot of the legwork and working on this and doing a lot of outreach. Counselor member Klitsky for supporting too. I, I'll be very brief. I think that this is kind of common sense as an ordinance. I think most people, when you ask them, already think it's illegal to shoot a gun in the city. And so I think that this is pretty straightforward, and I think it's important to have on the books. And I think it also protects our, our public places, too. So I appreciate all the work behind this, and I, I will be supporting it.
Counselor member, are you gonna, counsel member Bingo, are you gonna comment, or your hand is just still down?
No, yeah, I, I would like to comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. So I heard, I heard a couple of things here, and I actually think they're wholly incorrect. Okay? So counsel member Dillon, you said, if you're a responsible gun owner, this won't affect you. Incorrect. It will only affect responsible gun owners, because people who are not responsible gun owners, people who want to commit crimes, couldn't care less about the law. Okay? How many of the gun violence incidents you are mentioning? I believe shooting somebody is illegal already. So what does this ordinance do that changes that? What would this ordinance do to prevent that? Because that person has already demonstrated a willingness to not follow the law, and not just a law that's like, hey, this is a city of Spokane law. This is a natural law written on your heart that you're not to harm others, right? This isn't like, this is grade school-level stuff where you know not to hurt others. This, this ordinance in no way would have stopped that gun violence incident, right? And I don't believe that what we're seeing right now is a lack of responsible gun owners, because again, people committing crimes are not responsible gun owners. It is only people like me that will be affected by this. Because when I go into a situation, when I go into a crowd, right? If somebody wants to come and do harm in that crowd, but I am the responsible gun owner, not carrying on me at that time, I am at a severe disadvantage to the person who wants to create havoc, who wants to wreck people's lives. This only affects responsible gun owners. I am the person who is now less safe in this scenario. Not the person who's committing the crime, not the crowds. Responsible gun owners like myself, and thousands of others in this city, will actually be less safe, because now we will follow the law that is on the books, we will follow the laws, and we will no longer actually be at the same level as people who want to break the law. This, again, they, again, horrifying story, counsel member Dillon, that you, that you told about the dad who went and grabbed the gun. How would this ordinance have stopped that? It won't. It wouldn't have. Because again, that person already was going to commit a crime. Intimidating somebody with a firearm is a crime. It's a serious crime. This would not have done it. So again, for all of the stories in there, I totally get it, right? You know, I don't want people to feel uncomfortable, which is again why I concealed carry, but again, this ordinance would not have stopped any of those situations that you would have had. And yeah, that's it.
Counselor members.
Yeah, I was gonna call the question.
It's been called for the question on the adoption of the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by, prepare to vote.
No.
Technical error. Prepare to vote.
No.
Thank you.
Ordinance C 36535 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 1925 West 36th Avenue in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington, by admitting the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property.
There is no public comments. Any counsel commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C 36536 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 4502 North Havana Street, 4599 East Longfellow Street, and 4522 East Longfellow Avenue, in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington, by admitting the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property.
Any counsel commentary? Prepare to vote. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. We will now be transitioning into open forum. Please remember, expression of opinion included for the record, decorum benefiting the delivery process, no modes of expression included but not limited demonstrations, banners, signs, applause, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults will be permitted, and please direct all your comments to the chair. First, and you have two minutes. The first up this evening is Christopher Savage.
My name is Christopher Savage, and I live in District 3. I come to you this evening again to inquire why the council decided not to meet last week for their July 1 legislative session. The reason given for canceling the meeting was because of the 4th of July holiday. Yet the meeting was on July 1, which is three days from July 4. Again, why does the council think that they can take the whole week off from city business to celebrate a holiday when everyone else had to work up to the 4th of July? Since the beginning of this year, this will have been the ninth time the council has not met when they could have. We need you all to meet to discuss our city concerns as much as possible. If we were in better times, I wouldn't be as alarmed if there were no important city business to be conducted. But these are not those happier times we wish we were in. But these are not those happier times we wish we were in that might require less meetings. Our fair city is in a precarious predicament, and we need our council's guidance and full representation if we are to move forward with the correct solutions. For instance, with the recent Supreme Court ruling that the laws preventing homeless from camping on public property are not cruel and unusual punishment prohibited by the Eighth Amendment, it would be good to get an opinion on the council with what that means for Spokane. In my opinion, this not only greenlights the full implementation of Proposition Number 1, which prohibits encampments on any public property or within 1,000 feet from the perimeter of a park, childcare facility, or public or private school, but also calls into question our shelter system here in Spokane. As now beds do not have to be available to enforce this law, opening up more avenues that the city can help to reduce their $50 million deficit. So it would be prudent for the council to meet as much as possible to address these surprising change of events. I would like to end with a saying from an ancient Roman citizen that fully encapsulates what I'm trying to convey. As the orator Cicero from the Roman Republic once said, salus populi supremae ex elexoo, which means, let the good of the people be the highest law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christine Quinn. And after Christine Quinn, we'll have David M., if he has joined us online.
Christine or Dave, are you online? Could you hit star 3 if you're online?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay, then we will go on to Will Huelings. Will? And after Will, we will have Earl Moore.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. I am deeply concerned about the escalating crisis of fentanyl overdoses in Spokane. This devastating drug is claiming lives at an alarming rate, not only among humans, but also, now I see, among animals. I'm talking about this article I just read in the Inlander about dogs. Spokane is experiencing a record number of daily fentanyl overdoses. The statistics are staggering and heartbreaking. I could go on Spokane News and just go on my Facebook, and you'll see. I tag you guys. So I do that for a reason. So hopefully you guys see what I'm tagging you. The majority of these people overdosing, at least downtown from what I've seen, are predominantly poor, homeless, individuals struggling with addiction on the streets. Our community is in a grip of a fentanyl epidemic. And the question we must ask ourselves, what is being done? That's what I ask all the time. I know the mayor just a few weeks ago, you know, was all talking about it. Same with Councilman Dylan. I mean, I commend you guys, but I don't think stuff's being done. I still walk out my apartment, and I still see people openly smoking fentanyl off a foil. And what's sad is these people, I mean, you may say they're addicted or whatever you want to call it. But it seems like they don't care because they'll smoke their fentanyl and then throw their aluminum foil on the sidewalk. So me walking my dog has to come into contact with that. Or me walking here to city council, I got to walk past people smoking fentanyl. So my suggestion is, now that they've overturned that homeless thing, Brown versus Boise or whatever that is, they need to start enforcing the law. Because I'm going to be calling out SPD if I, you know, in my neighborhood. Because it's very concerning, but thank you.
Thank you, Will. Earl? And then after Earl Moore, Dennis Flynn.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Earl Moore, and I'm in District 3. City Council, you do not have the right to pick and choose what laws are enforced in Spokane. SCOTUS left no room for doubt. Prop 1 passed by 75% of the voters can and should be enforced. We can't be worried about a few people that think they know what is best for the 75% that voted for Prop 1. Specifically, Jules Helping Hands, Ben Stuckert, Smith, Barbara, brought us the Washdaw camp that grew to 700 illegal campers. Why should they get the right to scrap what 75% of us think is right? We need a solution, I say. Enforce the law. Quit providing the best freebies. Let our police department do the job they are hired to do. Again, I would say the number one solution. Support our police. Fund them properly, and let them do the job that they are hired to do. My question again is, where's the data from the nonprofits that I asked for? I only heard from one council person. Julie Garcia gets $750,000 until September to provide beds and churches for the homeless. Where are these? Well, one of them's in my neighborhood, and right now we are already seeing negative effects. A guy was passed out in front of a schoolhouse. We have shopping carts now in our streets. And then today, Mayor Lisa Brown announced her proposal to place a community safety sales tax on the November ballot. The proposed health tax, well, you all read what it is. It's going to generate 7.5 million annually. 15% of those funds go to the Spokaneians. So we will probably end up with about 6 million. That does not even begin to fill the budget deficit. So what kind of other taxes are there going to be next? On Monday, quoted from their cast card, said he'd not even been engaged in these discussions regarding the sales tax proposal. And he hadn't heard about this plan until the Brown administration sent a press release.
Thank you, Earl. Dennis, and then after Dennis, Sunshine.
Council President Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Today is July 8, 2024. And the high temperature, I think, got up to 98 today officially. Definitely warm. The highest temperature ever recorded in Spokane on July 8 was 99 degrees in 1970. In recognition of our Independence Day, I'll read an excerpt from the first two paragraphs of the Declaration. In Congress, July 4, 1776, "The unanimous declaration of the 13 United States of America. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whatever any form of government becomes destructive on these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." So it is my belief this founding document has set us on an arc of history, while imperfect for sure, that trends ever toward truth and justice.
Thank you, Dennis. Sunshine? And after Sunshine, we'll have Megra.
Sunshine from Spokane. Will comes in and mentions that we need better bike lanes. The people in wheelchairs come in and say that we can't get on the sidewalks and almost get hit. I mentioned my friend hit and died because no bike lane last year. Nobody did anything. Janet, a pillar of our community, got hit and died. Now it's a huge deal. And you guys are going to make changes. Why didn't the underdogs matter?
Thank you. Megra?
Is she online? Megra, if you're online, can you hit star 3? Go ahead, Megra. You're unmuted.
300 years ago, the slave patrol was formed in America to violently keep black people enslaved. These vicious slave patrols changed after the 13th and again after the 14th Amendment passages into militia groups that denied black people equal rights. Their name changed again in the 1900s to police departments, but the racist outcomes remained the same. According to a Washington State University five-year study, university five-year study of people of color are more likely to be searched in police stops, especially black and indigenous people who still have not even been given access to their state mandated seat on the Spokane Transit Authority Board. Police use their discretion to harass people of color more often despite being less likely to find contraband on their person than a white people searched. This racist harassment does not stop on the motorway. Spokane County Jail is filled with an extremely disproportionate number of people of color, especially black people. According to a study by the GFA Institute that Spokane County used grant money to pay for, 77% of the people in jail are being denied access to their freedom, family, medications, and jobs because bail is inaccessibly expensive. These people should not be held captive in jail at all. They also are still allowed their legal right to vote. In 2022, Spokane Auditor Vicki Dalton requested access to free grant money meant to expand access to voting rights to voters in jail. Spokane County Commissioners Al French, Mary Cooney, and Josh Kearns disgracefully did not agree with allowing voting rights and prevented this free money, which can be summed up by Vice President of Spokane NAACP Curtis Robinson's comment that this, quote, "furthers the injustices that have occurred here in our local criminal justice system." In Spokane, we all belong. But City Council defunded our Office of City Civil Rights, Equity, and Inclusion and abuses free inmate labor for events such as Hoop Fest. We need police accountability and to abolish the cash bail system that is continuing to inflict harm on Spokane's most vulnerable communities. We need an independent Office of Police Ambudsman that can investigate, report, and recommend without police censorship. And we need these things now.
Thank you, Megra.
Thank you, Megra.
Next, we have Dave. And after Dave, we will have Eugene Knowles.
Good evening. Dave Bilswen, Logan. Good evening, Council. I actually have good news. No complaining this time. Other than about the freaking weather. Because of this weather, for the last three days, we've had a water stand out there so that people can come by and pick up water. That's right, free water. That's what Cool Spokane is about. We're trying to gather enough resources to maybe provide a munchie. We've been providing sandwiches so far. Now that's just here, at City Hall. Mac movement is part of it. And that's why we chose this spot, because we love you guys so much. So we're out there from about 11:30, 12 until 7. In fact, I got to go see if they loaded up my car yet. We're out there every day when it's triple digits, when it's above 95. And there's supposed to be two or three or four other places. We're working on it. If there's some businesses out there that'd love to put out one of those round carousel things that have ice and water in there, just put them up front of your business and try to keep them stocked. This helps people stay hydrated and alive. And that's the whole point of Cool Spokane. Cool is a verb. Cool Spokane. We just don't want to cool you down.
Thank you, Dave. Eugene? And after Eugene, we'll have Jack Talcott.
Evening, Council. Eugene Knowles, Democrat. You know, there's a problem when people go after Christians, Muslims, Jews, Buddhists. And most people speak out against it. The problem isn't being a Democrat. Washington State is the only state that's been Democrat over the past 50 or 60 years. Idaho used to be Democrat with Frank Church. Oregon, Louisville, Oregon, used to be Republican with Mark Hatfield. California used to have Nixon and Reagan. Now they're all Democrat. So what's up with condemning Democrats? The problem is when you're an extreme Democrat or an extreme Republican and stick your fingers in your ear and don't want to hear anything else. So please, I'm a Democrat. Leave me alone. Now, let's get to the good stuff. Shelters, I went to Track Shelter. Every holiday, 4th of July, I go to a couple shelters. And I went to UGM to get the latest scoop. Is it $3 million per quarter? A million dollars a month for Track Shelter? You know, whoever got that shelter in there saw a pigeon. And that pigeon's name was the city of Spokane. And he's still sucking that money out. My proposition was, and I started in March, was to close that shelter down, get those people on a concrete slab somewhere while the city planned for a long-range shelter. But it's not going to happen if they don't have the people right now with the vision to close that shelter. You boost Spokane's debt. 20% per quarter? Every $3 million every quarter?
Thank you, Eugene. Next is Jack. And after Jack, we'll have Sherri Barnett.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Jack Talcott, longtime resident of Spokane. And as I'm sitting here listening, I'm grateful for you guys. Dealing with the budgets, dealing with the chaos and the violence and the problems of the city. Thank you. It's not something that I even want to deal with. But what I do want to deal with, my faith and inspiration is what brought me here today. Because the reality is budgets and violence. It's not just a Spokane problem. It's a nation problem. It's a world problem. And we are all united together at this time in history. So there's a lot of things happening in Spokane. There's a lot of things happening in the world. And I'm a man here in Spokane who's online seven days a week trying to find support. And then I thought about this. My goal is to find a way to speak with people in Congress. It feels pretty important to a lot of people that maybe wars should be ended and maybe the criminal banking systems could be addressed. And I realized, all of you people here in Spokane, by your positions, by your positions alone, you've got connections and relationships that I don't. So is there a way to have more of a conversation about this idea to get scheduled something with a group of you? Is it possible to get something scheduled for more conversations like this?
We, let's discuss that afterwards. There is opportunity for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. Sherri, and after Sherri, Andrea. Andrea Rose.
I'm Sherri Barnett. I live in Spokane. President Wilkinson and all members of the City Council. This particular thing I had planned to do just before the July 4, but I didn't get on the schedule. But I went through a lot of old sayings from our patriot past. And I put them together on a sheet, and I want to read them. America's godly heritage. Ronald Reagan said, "If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, then we will be a nation gone under." Edmund Burke, "All that is necessary for evil to triumph is for good men to do nothing." Abraham Lincoln, "But we have forgotten God. We have vainly imagined in the deceitfulness of our hearts that all these blessings were produced by some superior wisdom of our own." John Kennedy, "The rights of man come not by the generosity of the state, but by the hand of God." Douglas MacArthur, "History fails to record a single precedent in which nations subject to moral decay have not passed into political and economical decline." George Washington, "The fate of unborn millions will now depend, under God, on the courage of this army. We have therefore to resolve to conquer or die." William Penn, "Those people who will not be governed by God will be ruled by tyrants." Theodore Roosevelt, "We must have a genuine and permanent moral awakening." Thomas Jefferson, "I have sworn upon the altar of God eternal hostility against every form of tyranny over the mind of man." Benjamin Franklin, "Whoever shall introduce Benjamin Franklin, "Whoever shall introduce into public affairs the principles of primitive Christianity will change the faith of the world."
Thank you, Sherri.
Face of the world.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay. Does any, can I give you each one of these?
If you will, we'll pass them out. Thank you. Next, Andrea? Is she online?
Andrea, if you're online, can you hit star three?
Thank you, Sherri. Andrea, if you're online, could you hit star three? Okay, next, Raul. And after that, Crystal Burgen. Welcome, Raul.
My name is Raul Pena, District One. As Bingel stated, it's not us law-abiding citizens that carry guns, it's the crook that don't give a rat's toot toot. You, your child, will be subject to an idiot that don't care about what the rules are. Be thankful that you find somebody like me or others that are gun-carrying individuals that obey the law and protect not just ourselves, but everybody around us. I came for a different reason, but this just stuck to me, because y'all want to keep on passing rules and regulations to us law-abiding citizens about our Second Amendment rights to bear arms. If it wasn't for us who bear arms, we wouldn't have a nation, we wouldn't be free, we'd be a socialist, and we'd be suppressed. Take that in consideration. But what I came here for was, for three years, you two, mm-mm, I still haven't gotten no executive order to get a crosswalks for kids' safety in my neighborhood, but yet you spent a lot of money on 29th Street. Continue that process on 29th Street. Their crooks come down to my neighborhood, and y'all don't do a damn thing for our kids.
Thank you, Raul.
Hello. Crystal Yoskonson-Burgat, co-founder at MAC Movement, mom of three, struggling. I, Dreya did sign, tried to sign up, we were both having struggles with your online system. I actually didn't want to be in person today, so I feel that's hard for some of us. I wanted to inform you guys that Cool Spokane is up and running with the heat, and we kind of kick on anytime during extreme weather services. So we currently have one cooling station right here outside City Hall, working on more locations, and we just wanted to let you guys know that mutual aid does save lives. I know a lot of times you guys, people think a lot of funding is going towards homelessness and people out there, but in reality, it's not reaching our most vulnerable population and people suffering from this heat, and even in the library, they don't have everything that they need to stay cool and stay alive. And so we're doing that, we're filling in the gaps, and multiple organizations are stepping up with that. It's difficult for me because, and a lot of other people, because there are not housing, there's not housing help. I got, I was not able to get housing help myself with a 30-day pay or vacation, now I'm in a spot that does not have AC, and the cooling station I'm at is even cooler than where I am living and trying to survive. So I think it'd be really helpful if you guys would look into mutual aid options when supporting our community and looking at where needs need to be met and filling the gaps, because the most affected are black and brown people, people living outdoors, LGBTQ community living outdoors especially, our teens, kids, everybody struggling. So Cool Spokane, please support. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal. That concludes open forum in our legislative agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submissed.
It's been moved to second, and all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Please join us next Monday, July 15.